Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth City Council meeting for Monday, July 20, 2009. I appreciate your waiting while we were in a closed session. Welcome to the Eileen Dondaro Foley Council chambers. This time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask someone, Valerie from the City Clerk's office, to call the roll.
Mayor Farini.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock.
Here.
Councilor Noveline Clayberg.
Here.
Councilor Dwyer.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Councilor Kennedy.
Here.
Councilor Spear.
Here.
Councilor Hegmanic.
Here.
Councilor Panalakis.
Here.
All present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to ask if Council Panalakis would lead us in a moment of silence for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on our agenda is the annual proclamation for the 26th Annual National Night Out in Portsmouth. And I would like to ask Councilor Smith if he would be kind enough, given his recent training, to read that proclamation. Under presentations, yeah?
There it is. A proclamation. Whereas the National Association Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence preventive program on August 4, 2009, known as National Night Out, whereas the 26th Annual National Night Out provides an opportunity for the city of Portsmouth to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative, community, policing-oriented crime prevention efforts. And whereas the Portsmouth Citywide Neighborhood Association plays a vital role in assisting the Portsmouth Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of Portsmouth and sponsoring National Night Out 2009 locally. Whereas it is essential that all the citizens of Portsmouth be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that each citizen's personal participation can have in reducing crimes, drugs, and violence in the city of Portsmouth. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of National Night Out programs. Therefore, I, Thomas G. Farini, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 4, 2009, as National Night Out in Portsmouth, and call upon all citizens of the city of Portsmouth to join the Citywide Neighborhood Association, the Police Department, Fire, and Public Work Departments, and the National Association Town Watch in sponsoring the 26th Annual Night Out on that date, given by my hand and the seal of the city of Portsmouth on this 20th day of July, 2009. Thomas G. Farini.
Thank you, Councilor Smith. And I'd like to ask Chief Magnet to come forward and accept this proclamation, if you please. We thank you for your support. And now, we move to the presentation portion of the agenda. We have two presentations this evening, and we are happy to have with us Police Chief Michael Magnet and Deputy Police Chief Len DeSessa. I would like to ask a few people to speak briefly in this regard, but we are here to honor them this evening for their hard work. And now that they are retiring, we can certainly recognize what they have done for our community, the commitment and the skill with which they have done their jobs. I'd like to ask Fire -- I'm sorry. Please don't hold that against me. I'd like to ask Jerry Howe, the Chairman of the Police Commission, to come forward and speak briefly, and then we'll have a few other people speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilors. You sprung this one on me, Tom.
I did.
Nice job.
I'm sorry.
I have been on the Police Commission almost eight years now, and deciding whether to run again or not is a question I'm going to miss. Two people I've worked very closely with for the last eight years. And it has been for me an honor and a pleasure to work with both Chief Magnet, Deputy Chief DeSessa. They have taught me a lot about integrity, about compassion, and about commitment. And I am just proud to have served with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. At this time, the City Manager would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to just say a couple of words about both the Chief, Michael Magnet, and the Deputy Police Chief. But first, let me talk about the Deputy Police Chief. Over the last couple of years, we've worked very closely on a number of the events that you send to me with power. And the Police Department has been extremely cooperative, and many of the events have a lot of complexities to them that you really don't see once you approve them here at the City Council chambers. But the Deputy Chief, working very closely with my staff and others, makes sure that there is a great communication between the Police Department and all the other departments. And I want to thank him for that attention to detail and that service. He's been really great to work with. And the Police Chief, Michael Magnet, I just want to say that I have never met anybody that has been more professional. He certainly is not only an excellent police chief, but I believe a student of public administration. I was quite impressed when he became chief that he was continuing his MPA at the university. And that, not only with the pressures of the police chief's position, but all the pressures of the academics, he has achieved his MPA. And I hear he's putting it to good use in the future. And certainly, he has been an excellent person to work with and certainly one that I've been proud to associate with. Thank you, Your Honor.
Attorney Sullivan, did you care to briefly speak?
Sure. Thank you, Your Honor. Ordinarily, I'm not given a speaking assignment in these situations, but I've worked so long and so hard with both of those guys that the mayor's councilor let me share a few thoughts with you. I think I'll start with the deputy as well. Lenny, it comes kind of French, you know, you used to call him Lenny. And I have been involved in, I would say, almost daily situations, the entire time he's been deputy and well before that. And we've never had a harsh word, never had a disagreement about anything that ever had to be done. We always came to an agreement, and he always set about doing his side of that, performing his side of that agreement in a dedicated and professional manner. He's a wonderful man, and his leaving here is our loss. With respect to the chief, years ago, before he was chief, he used to have a screensaver on his computer and was set up in such a way that when you were talking to him, you'd see the screensaver. And I won't get this literally right, but I'll be close. That screensaver said something like, "In matters of style, go with the flow, but in matters of principle, be a rock in the stream." So if you were talking to him, you'd be reading that. Amazing. And in his case, it wasn't just words on a computer screen. He lived by it. Lived by it right till today. One of the most principled human beings on any walk of life that I have ever met. Thoroughly honest, excellent professional police chief. We are certainly going to lose something when he walks out of here, too.
Thank you, Bob and John. I'm just going to briefly make a comment, and then we're going to present you the chairs that you see there with the blue bows on them. I do not have the long service with you both that others do, but I will say this. In two years as mayor, first starting with Len, and in my time before that as a city councillor, to observe and be part of your interaction with the community in what one could only describe as significant neighborhood endeavors, it was a pleasure to watch you ply your trade and craft with people, understand them, be sympathetic, think of positive solutions, and maintain a compassionate face with the community at all times. It was a pleasure working with you in that regard. And as far as Chief Magnet is concerned, from his continual support of the community in a professional and truly, besides just hardworking, really sophisticated manner, I can say that when I had opportunities to speak with him during the past two years, as sometimes did happen, it was a fantastic interaction every time, with a good result every time. And I'm sure while others will come along and do a good job, I will sorely miss that, and it was a pleasure to work with you every minute. I certainly wish you well. And we'll come down and give you your chairs.
I'd just like to speak from the state level. I don't know how many people realize that Chief Magnet was very instrumental in getting mental health courts within the state, which we need desperately. And I hope that you will continue to work with us with that. Thank you.
And we will make sure you get your chairs tomorrow. You don't have to carry them out. We don't want to make you --
I'm making you carry them.
Well, you can run out the door with them.
Well, we're looking for the keys to the cruisers.
Would either of you like to say a few words? We'd certainly appreciate it, since we're springing it on everybody tonight.
I'm an emotional guy, so I'll try to get through this. Thank you so much for those kind words and sentiments. It's been an honor for me to serve with you as well, and to serve with the men and women of this Police Department and with this chief. My mother, God rest her soul, always said, "In life, one door closes, but another will always open." And one door is closing for me, and another one is opening. And I walked through that door in about two days, with some anxiety, many, many wonderful memories, and absolutely no regrets. It's been a wonderful ride, a wonderful time to serve, and I thank you.
I promise to be brief. Honorable mayor, councillor, city manager, citizens of Portsmouth, had the opportunity today to go through some old files, and I came across this letter dated September 19, 1978, to Michael J. Magnet in New Bedford, Mass. Dear Mr. Magnet -- this is my first rejection letter from the Portsmouth Police Department, by the way. Please be advised that a patrolman's examination was administered June 24, 1978, and all vacancies are being filled from the eligibility list, which was thus established. We do not anticipate conducting another exam this year. However, enclosed is an outline containing the requirements for employment as a patrolman. If you are qualified and -- if you qualify and are still interested, I suggest you contact us again in early 1979 requesting an application. Presently, the starting salary for patrolman is $10,519.39 and increases to $12,535 after three and a half years. And as you can see, I did the long division down here to see how that would break out for a pay period. Well, they actually did have a test in December and in January. And the next letter I received, which is in February, says your score on the patrolman examination taken by you during December 1978 and January 1979 is as follows, 87.66 percent. Please be advised that at present, one vacancy exists and very few are anticipated in the near future. An eligibility list has been established as a result of this examination. So as you can see, I was truly lucky to be hired. And I think if Bill Mortimer was here, he'd probably tell you that I was lucky to pass my probation. And if anybody had predicted 30 years ago that I'd be standing here retiring as the Chief of Police, I would have told them to go out and get a new crystal ball because the one they had was broken. Needless to say, I've seen many changes over these last 30 years. It's a much different city from when I walked a beat downtown. But it's a safer city. It's a better city. It's an even better community. And I'm proud of the role that I was able to play in making Portsmouth what it is today. But I'm even prouder of the role that the Police Department has been able to play in keeping Portsmouth safe. You should know that you have a very talented and able Police Department, and they are committed to serving this city. I would like to thank you very much for your support over the years. I would like to thank you for the opportunities that you have provided me, and not just me, but my family as well. It's been a very rich career. I'd like to thank the Police Commission and the past commissioners that I've had the privilege of serving with. Especially like to thank the employees of the Portsmouth Police Department, sworn and civilian, for all they do. And most certainly, my fellow employees in the city as well. I get to peek behind the scenes and see city as well. I get to peek behind the scenes and see what goes on. And I can tell you that it's because of your city employees that this is such a wonderful city. And finally, I'd just like to say thanks to my wife and my children, who have always been there for me, made a number of sacrifices so that I could put on this uniform and go out and play police officer for the last 30 years. Thank you very much. This is not student government day, so especially anyone who needs to do homework or has other issues, we thank you, though, for your kindness. All righty. We move on now to acceptance of minutes of the meeting of June 22nd, 2009. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We move on to the public comments session, and Valerie informs me that none have put down their name. And so with that, we will move on to Item 7A of the agenda, public hearings. And this is an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 4, Section 7.402, areas established, designated, and described of the ordinances of the city: Hanover Fleet Street, off-street parking area, and the High Hanover Parking Garage. John, do you care to speak briefly to it before we proceed?
Primarily what this does, Your Honor, is to control those instances where people might keep their car in the parking garage for a long period of time. We've had issues where, with the existing ordinance, people have not been... We have not been able to regulate with this exist... with the proposal. We will be able to work to make it a smoother situation for everybody, have them pay a monthly rate if they're going to be in there for 30 days. So we actually encourage people, if they need to have long term, to contact the parking office in advance, make arrangements, and we'll work with them very closely. We do have... This will allow us to put a policy in place that will be workable, I believe, for the administration, as well as those that need a long-term stay but don't want to have an annual pass.
And so that you know, folks, before we go forward with the public hearing, consideration of second reading on this is going to be Item 9A of your agenda. So with that, we'll just briefly explain the rules for a public hearing. We will ask people to speak. You have three opportunities to speak. You may speak for as long as you wish regarding this. But I would ask that you ensure that you keep your remarks on point as to the item before you in the public hearing. And with that, I will open the public hearing. And the reason I'm going so fast in my explanation to the people at home is that it appears that we do not have anyone here who is likely to speak. There is one person sitting here laughing, but I don't think she's here for this one. So with that, I will open the public hearing. I'm not going to call it three times. I'm just going to open it, seeing no one rise. Without objection, I will close the public hearing. To approval of grants and donations, acceptance of donations to the Coalition Legal Fund from the town of Alton in the amount of $5,000, and the town of... I'm sorry, $500, and $1,000 from the town of Carroll. The motion in order would be to accept and approve these donations and place them in the Coalition Legal Fund. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Item B, acceptance of the Police Department grant from the New Hampshire Department of Justice for enforcing underage drinking laws in the amount of $9,732. The motion would be to approve the grant to the Portsmouth Police Department as indicated. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Item C, acceptance of the Police Department grant from the Portsmouth Sunrise Rotary Charitable Corporation for the New Hampshire statewide explorer competition in the amount of $1,500. Again, the motion would be to grant the Portsmouth Police Department, or grant this to the Portsmouth Police Department as indicated. Does anyone care to make a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Do we have a motion duly seconded? Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item D, acceptance of donations to the PAL Summer Basketball League program as follows: Black Dog Investigations LLC, $200; Michael Conley, $120; Mr. and Mrs. C. Salvador, $25; Wilkinson Law Offices, $150; and Earl Chaney, $100. Do we have a motion to approve these donations to the Portsmouth Police Department?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Item E, acceptance of a grant from the New Hampshire Coastal Program, Maplewood Avenue Bridge Upgrade, in the amount of $100,000.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, and I...
Second.
Second, to authorize the City Manager to apply for, accept, and expend this $100,000 as a grant. Any discussion now that it's been moved and seconded? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The next is acceptance of another grant from the New Hampshire Coastal Program, the Mechanic Street Seawall Reconstruction, in the amount of $40,000. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Second, the motion's going to be to apply for and accept and expend the $40,000 grant from the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services Coastal Program. This is for the purpose of reconstructing the seawall on city-owned parcel where the Mechanic Street pump station is located. Do we... We have a motion seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. The next is an acceptance of a community development block grant in the amount of $657,267. And the motion would be to accept and expend this CBG grant in the amount mentioned from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Some moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Consideration of resolutions and ordinances. Now, we are to the second reading of Chapter 7, Article 4, Section 7.402. We would need a motion to pass, second reading of this proposed ordinance, and schedule a third and final reading on August 3rd, at the August 3rd, 2009 City Council.
Some moved.
Counsel Smith makes the motion.
Second.
Second, Counsel Pendelakis. Discussion. Counsel Kennedy.
Last time, I brought up the fact that some people will be staying. And I know it said, "Contact the city," but a lot of these people are coming from afar and might not necessarily know they need to contact the city. So we talked, and there was going to be some... brought forward some kind of way that we were going to let them know, either through signage, or... And I'm not sure how that's going to happen.
I'll have John Fredericks speak to that. John Fredericks, speaking to this issue.
Mr. Mayor, City Counselors, what we plan to do is erect a sign that will say at the entrance to the garage, "After you enter, if you plan to park for more than seven consecutive days, please see the garage attendant." We also have that information posted on our website so that that would be clear.
Okay, further questions?
Mm-hmm.
Seeing none. Everyone ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So we're going to have third reading, August 3rd, at the August 3rd, 2009 City Council meeting. Consent agenda has nothing upon it this evening, and we move to Item 11, which also has nothing. Bringing us to Item 12, reports and communications from city officials, the City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item on the agenda that I have is a request for approval of a proposed six-year agreement between the Portsmouth School Board and the non-supervising cafeteria personnel. As you are aware, this collective bargaining agreement is for a six-year period, and follows the same, pretty much the same conditions as other collective bargaining agreements, with no salary increase for fiscal year 2010.
Okay, you have it before you. We've had an opportunity to review it. We need a motion to approve if that is the direction which we are to take. Does anyone care to make a motion?
Some moved.
Counselor Novaleen Clayberg makes the motion. Do we have a second? We have a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. Item 2, adoption... Oh, City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. The next item is an item that was tabled on action regarding public gatherings in Market Square. What I'd ask, Your Honor, is that there really be a motion at this point to take it off the table so that I can move forward with further...
Some moved. Discussion. Yep, this is the motion to take it off the table and second it. Since no one's probably going to move to negate that motion, discussion. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, we're on the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. What we've done with the proposed policies, we've made some changes with, from input from various council members. One of the major items, if you look at the proposal, it allows... Item number five allows the City Manager to have the authority to approve the use of that portion of Pleasant Street from Porter Street to Market Square, being in the same area used in the summer and the street activities, for gatherings involving obstructions and/or amplification, with such reasonable terms and conditions as the City Manager may determine to be necessary to safeguard public travel and the conduct of lawful business activity within or near the gathering or the event. What this does is allow us the opportunity to take a large gathering and have a place for them to assemble without causing undue interruption with church services and the activities on the sidewalk. I know Reverend Shippey is here, and she is interested in making sure that, you know, that people understand that we do have an active congregation downtown that has weddings, funerals, services. The North Church has been extremely public-spirited in opening the church on numerous occasions for events. And so this allows us, we, you know, certainly we're not saying that people can't gather in Market Square and have, you know, and protest or whatever they want to do, as long as they don't obstruct the sidewalk, as long as people can flow through. What we're saying is that there are large events that people want to have additional amplification or gatherings that we could close, Pleasant Street as we have in the past for summer in the street, and that would give me the authority to do so.
Okay, the City Manager has gone through this policy. If we wish to adopt it, we would need to have a motion to put it on the floor for discussion, a motion to adopt. Uh, City Attorney in the first instance.
In rereading this proposed policy, I think there are a couple more words that ought to be added. If you will look at the fourth whereas clause, the one that says, "The City Council has been advised that it may adopt reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions." The two words I would ask the council to add now come after adopt and before reasonable. And the very important words that should be added are content neutral, because that is the most basic limitation on the City Council's action in First Amendment areas. City Council cannot look at the content of expression.
And so, we, since there's not a motion pending, this is still coming to us as presented by the City Manager and the City Attorney, having drafted it, and now we have it back. We've got that change. We don't need to move the change. If everyone understands it, we can get a motion on the floor to discuss it. Did you have another change, Bob, or was that it... That's it. Eric, we don't have a motion on the floor.
I move to adopt the policy.
We have a motion to adopt. We have a second. Counsel Dwyer.
Clarification. And I may just be not getting what I think is the punchline, but I see in Number 4 that the City Manager has the authority to approve the use of the lawn mall. I see in Number 5, the City Manager has the authority to approve the use of the Pleasant to Porter, Pleasant from Porter to Market. I see in Number 3 that the process is identified for if one wants to put in obstruction or and/or use electronic amplification. I see the process is to write to the City Manager, but I don't see where the authority lies, or is clearly lies for approval of such. If that's intended to be the City Manager, I'm totally fine with that, but I don't see that we've actually taken care of what I think is the punchline, you know? If I want to do what was done on Memorial Day, who approves it? Who has the authority?
I would.
Okay, I, I'm, I just think that should be clearer because it doesn't really say. And the fact that it so clearly says that you have the authority in the other instances...
Oh, I see what you're saying. I got you.
You know what I mean? I think it should clearly...
I see what you're saying. Who shall be granted the authority at the end of that... I don't know.
Sure, sure.
If it's going to be submitted to you, I think the way to address the comment is that at the end of that sentence, the phrase should be added, "Who shall have the authority to approve the same?"
Great.
So is that, that's a motion to amend by Counsel Dwyer?
Yes.
And do we have a second on the motion to amend?
I can.
Okay. Counsel Smith, you wish to speak?
Thank you. Not to the motion just made, but just further comment.
My apologies. Let's withhold discussion on the motion made. Your discussion is to the previous. Please go ahead.
Thank you. The, just wondering, what is the timeline? And should it be spelt out of when somebody approaches you to how long they can get their approvals? Well, if I might, Your Honor.
Please.
To put timelines in, it could get us into kind of a, you know, again, we, if somebody comes in and thinks they're going to have maybe 15 people that are going to be gathering out, and all of a sudden, they come and say, "Well, it looks like we're going to have 75 people, and I think I'm going to need amplification," then I'm going to want to move them over. I mean, we're not really telling them they can't do what they want to do. We just want to move them so that they don't obstruct the sidewalk. We put them in an area, and we reroute the traffic as necessary. Sometimes these things grow, you know, you know how that goes. I mean, even the last, the last one, we didn't know what size we were going to get for... And it's unfair to the North Church to not do that. And if they have a small crowd, fine. But, you know, I think we've developed such a good traffic pattern now through there to be able to move traffic around that it is not a burden to businesses if we do that. It's more of a burden if we don't for the North Church. But my question still stands. If somebody comes in and says, you know, they come in to see you on a Thursday, that they want to hold a rally Saturday, is that specific time? Do you need at least 72 hours, 48 hours? Is there a timeline that... It's a good question. I...
I think that the advantage of adding this language that delegates the authority to the City Manager to make this decision is that the City Manager can act any day of the week. Whereas if it was left with the City Council, as it might have been before, the Council only meets twice a month, and it would really delay people. But with the item written as it is now, the manager can act quickly.
And if need be, if we find it's a problem, I'll certainly come back to the City Council. The idea of setting up these policies is that we can come back and amend them in one meeting.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of some, that the public at large should be able to have a reasonable idea of when they make a request, when they'll have an answer back.
Right. And I would, I typically would be immediate. I mean, it's how we deal with all the issues coming through now. I mean, we would, I would consult with the Police Department, Fire Department, and other departments to assure that there wasn't something unusual happening that would prevent the closure of that street.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appreciate your patience on that one, Counsel Smith. And now we move to the amendment offered by Counsel Dwyer, seconded, for the two words, or the word changes. Attorney Sullivan added additional language, but that's really what the amendment is about. We have that language in. Any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now we're back to the policy itself. Discussion. Counsel Spear.
I'm trying to think about how this, obviously, how it would play out in real life. And the one item, the traffic detail, Public Works employees required for setup and cleanup. And obviously, I don't want to pay for that stuff, clearly, so I'm glad it's in here. But at the same time, I'm concerned if a group, say a group that doesn't really have any funding, all they do is want to go shout and yell, and they go from, unexpectedly, from, like you said, 15 to 75 people, and you want to move them correctly into that Pleasant Street area. I'm wondering, first of all, how would we extract money out of a group like that?
Let me speak to that issue. You know, we've gotten that down pretty good. I mean, we, right now, when we have summer in the street, we don't even need a police officer anymore at that location.
Good.
So if it's 75 people or 100 people that are going to go out there, we would just close it and, you know, I talked, the Public Works Department would come out, put the barricades up, and we'd reroute the traffic as we typically do. People are used to the rerouting of the traffic. I would prefer to be able to do that than, you know, have a situation where the churches has an event or a service or something, and have 75 people in front of there. You know, to ruin somebody's wedding, or, you know, to be, it would be unfortunate. And, you know, the church has been, and especially Reverend Shippey, has been extremely, extremely, you know, patient with this whole situation. People want to be in Market Square, and certainly, if we do what we're doing here, they still can stay in Market Square.
First, Counsel Spear.
As, and as this becomes more and more popular, would we ever look at getting those bollocks, yeah, that you can raise and lower?
I think we would. I think I'll be looking at, you know, I have some ideas that I might bring forward in our capital plan.
Right.
Because I think we could, you know, there could be... Because I think we could, you know, there could be a way to make this a little bit more attractive and have events there, yeah.
Thank you. Further questions? Your inquiry, discussion. Hearing none. On the policy for public gatherings in Market Square. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero opposed, and we have a unanimous vote. Item three, the report back from Market Square, regarding the Market Square informational kiosk.
Your Honor, what I'd like to do is I'd like to have Rick Tantor come down and speak to this issue. This is a matter that was referred to the planning board, and Rick is our new director of planning. And certainly, I'll have him speak to this and talk about what I believe is a good proposal.
Thank you again, Mayor.
Welcome to our new planning director, Mr. Tantor. I think this is the first time you've spoken before a city council meeting in a regular meeting, so welcome.
Thank you very much. Yes, this is a request that came from the Chamber of Commerce. The informational kiosk in Market Square is city-owned. It was, I guess, historically developed as part of the original redesign of Market Square, and the Chamber has been using it as an informational kiosk for many years. And they have taken care of the maintenance of the kiosk from year to year, and they have found that, over time, that there's been a lot of deterioration in the materials, the exterior materials, and the windows and so forth, because of people tacking up notices continually, and especially every spring, when it's time to reopen it again. It's time to, they need to put a lot of work into it. So, what they have, they came before you with a request to do certain changes to it, and those changes included, the primary thing was to have some lockable display cases that could be used for event information, and those would be rentable out to nonprofits, and that would help to defer some of the cost of maintaining the kiosk. They had also looked at the idea of having an electronic display that would give information on events going on in the city. Looking at that, we worked with the planning board, and there was concern about the idea of electronic display, but the actual lockable display cases seem to be a good idea, a good way to help defray some of the costs and put some of the contribution that you make to their tourism marketing efforts to better use. In addition, talking with the president of the Chamber, the other idea that came up was a seasonal, essentially, wraparound protective shield, or something, whatever you would call it, for the off-season time, that would be a low-cost, solid material that notices could be tacked to during the off-season, when the Chamber is not actually using it as a information booth. And that would be something that could be put up and taken down seasonally, that would further protect the exterior of the kiosk from damage. So, what we have recommended, what the planning board is recommending in response to the referral, is to approve the installation of those display cases, approve the installation of the off-season panels that would wrap around the structure, and enter into a formal agreement with the Chamber, because that never really has been done to, or at least in recent memory, it has not been done, regarding operation and maintenance of the kiosk, to formalize this arrangement and outline the respective responsibilities of the parties. And then, the final thing was to explore possible locations elsewhere in the downtown area for notice boards. The demand for these notices is out there, and while the kiosk itself may not be the best place, there may be other places that we could look for.
Thank you for that explanation. So, we're going to need a motion to accept the, well, do you want to speak to it first, John?
No, Your Honor, just a clarification on the electronic display. They've withdrawn that.
Yes.
And so, there won't be electronic displays. Just wanted to clarify.
So, we'd need a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning board with the stipulations indicated.
Move to accept the recommendation of the planning board with aforementioned stipulations.
Second.
Assistant Mayor moves to accept. Counsel Kennedy with a second. Discussion. Counsel Smith.
Thank you. I got a lot of phone calls on this one, surprisingly enough, and a few emails. While I don't think anyone has an issue with three and four, because I think there should be some sort of formal agreement, and I think we should always have places for, you know, kind of make it a little bit nicer out there, so that information can get out there for local bands and so forth. The display cases is what I got a lot of the phone calls on, the idea that they would have to pay. Because basically, I think what's going to end up happening is, even if they put up the display cases, these things are still going to get taped to it and stuck to it, and probably end up being broken, or as things go on. And, you know, as much as, you know, especially sitting on the board with the Chamber of Commerce, I certainly understand that, you know, the maintenance cost of this thing, putting up the display cases, I think, is going to be a further headache and management issue for the Chamber and probably the city by the end of the day. To be able to cover it up in the off-season with something, so that things can be stuck to it and taped to it, that's probably fine. But, I won't be, I won't be voting in favor of this, while we have item one on there. If anyone feels the same way, I'd be happy to make the motion to ask for item one. See your hand. So, I'm going to make the motion that we amend the motion to remove item one.
Second. Well, the.
You still have a motion?
Second, let me make sure that I get it. That's to remove approval required for the.
Display case.
Yeah.
Let's see here. The stipulation one, which is the.
Yeah, stipulation one. Approve the installation of the display cases for event advertising is requested in his letter.
Correct.
Okay. You've got a motion to amend requesting that that be removed.
Thank you. Further.
Counsel Smith.
Thank you. Again, I think it's going to be an issue where it's either going to end up broken, or other things. I think this is not a deterrent to stop people from posting bills on this. If the intent of this is to stop, you know, have a system in place that they're no longer going to allow bills to be posted on this, then that's what the focus of this should be. To be able to create it into another advertising revenue, while I certainly understand the cost needs that the Chamber is trying to satisfy, I just don't see as this is what's going to resolve the underlying issue, which is people posting bills on this.
So, we have a motion to amend, seconded. Counsel Kennedy.
I just have a question. Did Mr. Bates bring that forward as an idea?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I thought. All right.
Counsel Dwyer.
I guess, I hadn't really thought about it. I understand what Counsel Smith is saying, especially since, I guess, I hadn't, and maybe we hadn't really talked about before that paragraph, about essentially, they're going to be low-cost panels, otherwise wrapping around the structure. So, I think what Counsel Smith is saying makes sense, that if you've got panels there, then the whole thing will be treated as a panel, and the off-season is like most of the time, right? Isn't the off-season most of the year?
All of, about eleven weeks, yeah.
So, we really haven't, it seems like we really haven't done anything with this. So, I'm not, you know, I hate to be against something where I can't offer a better solution for it, but I hear what Counsel Smith is saying, is it really just doesn't change anything.
Okay, so we have Counsel Smith's amendment. Discussion. Further discussion on the amendment. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to call the question on the amendment. All in favor of Counsel Smith's amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One vote, no. And now, we're back to the motion to accept the recommendation in the first instance.
Two, three, and four.
Items two, three, and four.
Call the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. So, it passes. Next, city manager.
Rick, don't go anywhere. For the next few, I'll deal with the projecting signs, four, five, six, seven, eight are projecting signs. This is the new method that we're using. They don't come to the city council first. They go to the planning board first. We have put the appropriate information in your packet with the photos. I would like to go through them one at a time. If people have questions, I would then ask Rick to come forward and speak to item number four. It's a request for a license from Mike Bristow, owner of Raleigh's English Fudge, for a property located 10 Commercial Alley to install a projecting sign. And I'd recommend that the city council move to accept the recommendation of the planning board as presented.
So, we're going to need a motion in accordance with the city manager's recommendation.
No move.
We have a motion. We have a second. Discussion. Everyone's had an opportunity to review the package. We understand the new procedure. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous.
The next projecting sign is a request for a license from Alexandra Dominia?
Domina.
Dominia. Owner of Sandy Dominia Associates for property located 10 Lad Street to install a projecting sign.
So moved.
Second. Moved, seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
We now have a request for a license from Philip Thanis, owner of Thanis Galleries, for property located 39 Series Street to install a projecting sign. We need a motion in accordance with his recommendation.
So moved. Counsel Smith? Seconded by Assistant Mayor. All in favor? Wait a minute. Sorry. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And that's our new procedure. And I think Counsel Dwyer was the one who might have.
The next item is a request for a license from Stuart Telchinsky, owner of Headlines for property located 103 Von Mall to install a projecting sign. We have another motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
A request for a license from Alex Rogers, Jane Derry, owners of Jay Covington, for property located at 185 High Street to install a projecting sign.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Seconded, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Onto informational items.
Your Honor, one item that I sent you out, a notice that to hold a date for July 30th for Lopet School, there, we are, take that off your calendar. There will be a new date issued. I believe I've sent you out something in addition, but I just want to make sure people took it off their calendar if they had it on. That's all I have, Your Honor, unless there are questions from city council members. I'm available. Counsel Smith. Thank you. Just a brief one on, while I like the new policy that we just went through on projecting signs, I was wondering if it could be possible, when they put them in, to have a image of what the sign would look like. I think that might help the process a bit. Wherever possible, we will try to do that. Thank you.
Just under informational also, as we.
Just a comment on that request. Being familiar with this kind of thing, a lot of people don't want to invest in the sign until they know whether they're going to get one or not. Now, maybe, so it might end up being just a drawing of what they plan, obviously, but it wouldn't be a picture of the sign, because.
Doesn't have to be.
It's an expensive.
I'm not looking for something that's specific, just.
I will.
As, as. We will ask them if they can provide a yes. If not, we'll just show you the location and probably the dimensions, if we can.
Yeah. I know you have an events listing in your binder. Oh, Counsel Kennedy, my apologies.
No, on the events listing, under Festival, there's the wrong date. Press卡, Local Fish, Lobster Festival, says 9/12, 2009, it's 9/19. Top one says 9/19, but the bottom one says 9/12.
Oh, just the end.
Yeah, the end date. I thought it was November 19. I wanted to get confused.
Okay. We got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and just further to remind the public and everyone else under events, that the Police Commission will be hosting a conversation with Deputy Chief Ferland at 6:30 at the Levinson Room on Tuesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 22nd. 6:30 at the Levinson Room, you're welcome to come and ask questions. That is it. John, anything further?
I'm here to answer any questions council members might have.
All right. With that, I'll move on to the mayor's portion of the agenda. First, we have three appointments for voting. The first is Dennis Molton for reappointment to the Building Code Board of Appeals. Do we have a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Do we have some discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We have a motion to appoint Ron Zola, appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Robert Pollard for appointment to the Pierce Island Committee.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We have a resignation from Amy Berenger of the Library Board of Trustees. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
With regrets and a letter to follow?
Thank you. We'll take that as a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Now, before we get to the middle school issue and where we go with the timing of them, I'd like to ask the city manager to offer us an update on some of the factual information that we have that bears on the process.
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the things that we have been waiting for, and the city, and I'll have the city attorney speak to it specifically, is the appraisal on the taking for the Pierce property. The city attorney's office did receive an appraisal last week. Before we released it, we wanted to make sure that we looked at it and evaluated to make sure it did accurately reflect what we believe is the value. The value on, that has been put on, and we have a full appraisal, which we will release, is $590,000 for that taking. That is something that the city attorney will be submitting to the attorney general's office, and I'll let him speak to the process that entails from there.
As I believe the council is aware, we had a pre-approved appraiser from the attorney general's office, a member of the Appraisal Institute named Harvey Cohen from Armonk, New York. He'd done work for us in a tax context in the past, waterfront properties of commercial industrial nature. And so, the attorney general's office had approved utilizing Harvey for this process. He looked at the situation and was struck, as we all have been, with the fact that the city is being acquired to put an acquisition value on land that it already owns. So, it's kind of an intellectual exercise. And his analysis of the situation is that the Pierce restriction on this property basically said that the city could not develop its own property. Thus, what we had to take in order to conduct a middle school expansion is the development rights. So, by analyzing a number of development right acquisitions in the area, he compared them to the subject property and developed this $590,000 value. We have not yet submitted it to the attorney general's office, but that will be happening within a few days. There were some minor typographs that had to be corrected in the version that we got, so we're changing those, and we should have a final version available for public view, and obviously, for the council and the attorney general's office, within two, three days.
Now, where we are procedurally is that, we thank you for that presentation. Tonight, if we were to move to establish a special city council meeting for Monday, August 10th, to have the presentation in public hearing that we indicated we would do, to authorize a bond issue, the amount currently stands at $38 million three. However, and I might make this procedural suggestion, then we can get to the motion. It may be that that bonding amount is going to be less, both as a result of what we're learning on the eminent domain front, and let's say, other counselors, I know some counselors in the press have indicated items of cost that they might try and remove. It might make sense to allow it to procedurally go forward in its current vein. Naturally, motion practice is what it is, and you can make a motion. But, the motion would be to establish the public hearing. That's my recommendation, and that's what we indicated that we would do and have a presentation. City manager, do you care?
Just a couple of things. The amount of money that has been budgeted for the taking was $2 million. So, just, and I'm not suggesting anything, it's just that I want you to understand the process. If you have the public hearing on August 10th, you'll hear the public hearing as advertised, and on August 17th, if you choose to vote on the bond issue, requires two-thirds vote, but you can amend your amount at that time, if you want to. So, just be aware of that. You would not do that tonight. You would do that when there is a formal bonding motion before the city council that has been duly advertised.
So, this is merely for the public hearing, and that's what's before us, but we need somebody, someone would need to make a motion if that's what we were to do.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing on August 10.
Second.
We have a motion, seconded. Discussion. Counsel Dwyer.
I just want to, and partly because I did my professional travel plans for the summer with the notion that we were to have this on August 3rd, and I see Esther is saying the same.
I'm on vacation.
I just want to make sure that, and I'm a presenter, so I can't cancel that. I want to make sure that we're not voting that night, because if it's a public hearing, we can listen to it on the airwaves, and I presume we wouldn't be asking questions that night as a council either. It would strictly be a public hearing. It would strictly be a public hearing. Because otherwise, I think if several of us start to be absent when we thought this was going to be August 3rd, we're sort of losing the point. But I absolutely want to make sure we're not voting that night. And I understand by the motion that we would be voting on August 17th. I think we should establish that, though, because I, you know, I've already, I already had, because of the August 3rd, I've already made a return ticket to come back just for that evening, but to do it two days in a row, two weeks in a row starts to, I can't, I can't. It's too far away.
Understandable. I think that with regard to the voting, the voting occurs on the, this is not a City Council meeting for the purpose of voting, it's a public hearing, the voting is going to take place later, and we could perhaps even put a motion on the floor that the voting take place, again, understanding people may wish to amend, but there will be a presentation. Typically, in a public hearing, we have a presentation, and typically counselors don't ask questions. We have the presentation, we hear what they have to say, and the public comes and they make their offering. So I offer that. Counsel Kennedy.
Is there any reason why we can't have the public hearing on the 3rd? I mean, I've kind of worked my schedule based on the schedule for the summer, and I think it's very important to hear the public. This is a tough issue, and I feel I'd like to be here to listen to them.
Your Honor, may I make a suggestion?
Please.
May you, could you, because we have to have seven clear days to advertise, if you, the first, in the first instance, I know that there may be a council member that may not be available for the 3rd, but I think it's going to be important to realize, to find out if the architect's going to be available for the 3rd.
Yes.
So he is available for the 10th. Now, so that maybe authorize the mayor to set the date either August 3rd or August 10th so that we can check.
Right.
I mean, that's, I mean, I would open that, I know that Counsel Speer has...
As long as we're not voting on the 3rd.
We're not voting on the 3rd.
Right. And I'm comfortable, too, as long as we're not voting on that day. And the one other thing I would ask is if there are going to be council questions, if we might be able to provide questions for someone else to ask in advance, if we have.
The only, the only other thing I would say is that that's going to make for a long night, which is fine, because we have other business that we're going to have to deal with on that night. So that was the idea of another, I mean, maybe another night that week, because it will be a long night. And just, that's fine, but I think people have to really come to that realization. We have other business that we're going to have to get through on August 3rd, which we've had major conversations on.
Right.
So just be aware of that. Maybe allow the, you know, I think, Mayor, if I might, I hate to do this on the fly, but maybe that week of the 3rd, if we can find people available that week of the 3rd on other nights.
Well, the 4th is National Night Out, you might not want to do with that.
No, that's absolutely correct. Good point.
I could do the 5th.
The 5th? Is there any problem with...
And I'm only in Washington that week, so I'm comfortable flying back for that night. I just, I'm too far away the next week.
So the question is, would the 5th work for people? That's the question, because I just don't feel, we have a lot of important items to deal with on the 3rd.
We need to do all of them justice. So if, how does the 5th sound? I don't see anyone saying no. We're good.
The 5th or the 10th? Because the architect may not be available on the...
On the 5th. So could we do this? We will, we will seek to engage the architect and have the architect available for the 5th. Failing that, we would, we would fall back to the 10th. Understanding, and we'll give it the good college try on the 5th. So appreciate that. So now, the motion would have to be, if that's acceptable to the maker, the motion is to have a, the public hearing either the 5th or the 10th pending contacting the architect and ascertaining their affability with the vote to be on the 17th. So that's the motion that's before us. Is that acceptable to the maker, the motion? It is. Counsel, Novellian Claybrook says it is, and it is, it is, we need a second, well, we already had the second Counsel, Penalakis. With that, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you for your patience. I just have one more thing to say under reports, and then we'll move on to the Counsel Smith. The City Council in private session has determined that it will request the City Manager to undertake a study of contracts for non-union, single-contract employees, including but not limited to the police chief, deputy police chief, fire chief, deputy and assistant fire chiefs, and superintendent and assistant superintendent of schools, to begin, and we're asking him to begin work on the development of standards for benefits and pay for those contract employees. The City Manager expects that this will take approximately 30 days, and he will be beginning the process. However, given that we have two immediate open positions to address in the Police Department, we've agreed that in the first instance, we will invite the Police Commission to our, to the hearing, I'm sorry, the City Council meeting on August 3rd for a non-public closed session talking about this issue, but also, we will make a public offering at that time and ask the City Manager to give us a preliminary outline and understanding of what it is he will be suggesting as we go forward. It will not contain all of the parameters and standards, because all of the work will not yet be done, but we're going to present a report, City Manager will present a report at that time. And then that evening on August 3rd, we can, as a council, if we wish, determine further procedure for going forward with this information. Got all that, Valerie? I will red dictate this.
I got it.
All right. Happily.
You is moving fast.
I'm sorry.
Need a motion?
Well, no, I don't know that we do need a motion. I think this is just a, I'm taking the privilege of the chair, and I appreciate your kindness in allowing to me to offer it in this fashion. Anything else? Then I am done, and next on the agendas, Counsel Smith.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for, or I'd like to make the motion to accept the traffic and safety minutes from June 11th.
Second.
There wasn't anything in here that's going to require an ordinance change, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have on anything specific.
Questions for Counsel Smith. Hearing none. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Is that all ayes?
No, I oppose.
Nay. We have a, we have a, one opposed, eight four.
Moving on to traffic and safety minutes, make the motion to accept them from our July 9th meeting. Again, happy to answer any question, there wasn't anything specific that would require an ordinance change.
Motion duly made by Counsel Smith, seconded by Counsel Penelakis. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Eight four.
And moving on to the last item for this section is the Parking Committee meeting, make the motion to accept the action sheet from July 9th. Again, there's nothing on here that would require an ordinance change.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counsel Kennedy.
The Atlantic Parking Valet Service. I was a little disappointed it didn't come forward to us, and it just got extended. There have been some questions about taking parking spots and not using some of the service area where it could be used, so I was just kind of disappointed it didn't come forward to the council for discussion, and automatically got approved.
Thank you, Counsel Kennedy.
Be happy to discuss that.
Counsel Smith, do you care to speak?
There was a turnout, one of the, probably one of our larger turnouts at our Parking Committee, that everybody came down and had letters also that stated they were doing a great job. They have been working within their two parking spaces. There hasn't been any indication that they have worked outside of that or had any, you know, any disruption of traffic. Some of the people that had concerns about them at the beginning came out and said they've been acting professionally, been doing a great job, as well as the, we essentially have taken two parking spaces in the downtown and on averaged out, turned them into 80 spaces. They're on average moving 50, 60 cars during the weekend, over, at the weekends, they're moving just over 100 cars. So it's been a very successful program.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to offer, I've observed them many, many times, and as you know, I spend a lot, a lot of time in town, and Counsel Smith's exactly right, it really has been a net effect of like adding, you know, multiple parking spaces to downtown. It's a smooth operation, it seems, it's not disruptive at all, and, you know, I would echo the, and applaud the innovation to do something like this to, you know, in effect, add parking without getting any cost to the city.
And just a further point.
Counsel Smith.
If Counsel Kennedy is getting any other concerns or anything, I am more than happy to take those as Chair's Parking Committee, and, because again, we have another 90-day review. So if you are getting requests, concerns, or someone out there has an issue with them, please get in touch with me, and I am more than happy to take a look at them and make sure that if there is some difficulties out there, that they get corrected.
Okay, anything further on this? So we do have the motion pending, do we not, Valerie? I hope, yes, I think we do. Motion was to accept and approve the action sheet minutes in the July 9, 2009 Parking Committee meeting. I'm just saying that to remind everyone. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. One opposed, eight, 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 four. Sorry, Counsel Kennedy opposed.
Last item.
Counsel Smith.
If I may, forgive me for not having written report on this as normally would be required, but I was just, I would like to make a motion to request the Planning Board to look at the renaming of the northern end of Woodbury Avenue. The concern is, in order to get truck traffic because of GPS systems and so forth off of the residential section of Woodbury Avenue, when they look at the GPSs and directions of Woodbury Avenue, they're trying to traverse down Woodbury Avenue. Now, of course, we have no truck traffic on there. Some still sneak through, but it's getting better. The idea is to rename the business end, Market Street, or whatever the Planning Board wants to come up with, from the point of what is now the Rite Aid and that set of lights continuing up, which...
Up towards Newington.
Out towards Newton, Newington, thank you. Because the idea of it is, is that that's really the straight path through as development time has gone on. It used to be residential continuing out there, but time has changed, and the idea of it is just to, again, keep truck traffic out of the residential areas, keep them on the highway, that one extra area, one extra exit, and getting off and keep the truck traffic where the businesses are. I realize is that it may create some concerns for Newington, because they continue the Woodbury Avenue down, but again, I'm, no offense to them, but I'm trying to protect our neighborhoods. So I'd like to make that motion, if I could have a second to it.
Okay, so he's made a motion to refer this to the Planning Board for the consideration of renaming of Woodbury Avenue to Market Street. That's the motion. It's been seconded. Discussion.
Just for clarification?
Counsel Smith.
Market Street or whatever they decide.
Or whatever they deem appropriate.
Just no longer Woodbury.
Whatever they may, whatever they may recommend. Okay, Counsel Penelakis.
You're going to refer it to the Planning Board?
We are.
So anyone that had any questions because of address changes and whatnot, it's very[1656.42]